I got this, um.
Yes.
Never turned it on. What's that? They were? Oh, okay. Okay. You gonna turn yours on?
I mean, I turned it off. That was just.
I mean.
I'm ready to.
All right. Call this meeting to order at six o'clock. It's a regular school board meeting for Garden Valley School District number seventy-one on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I get a phone call. George Simpson here. Clay Capper here. Eric Palu here. Ken Donlin. Is there any discussion about the agenda?
Uh, no, please. No, please, so.
No.
What do you think? Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and adopt the agenda as written.
I will second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve and adopt the agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, let's read the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want the extras?
Oh.
That's good. Okay, so we do have a community member that would like to speak about policy seventy-four-hundred-P-three. Ms. Olson, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. I want to thank you for allowing me the time to address the school board and the ordinance regarding grant funding and specialty amendment policy seventy-four-hundred-P-three, which is requirements and restrictions for procurement under a federal warrant. I've watched with some concern as Garden Valley School has moved from a rural school to a big city school mindset. The ongoing acceptance of funds from state and federal governmental and non-governmental organizations, NGOs, could account for much of this. I've previously discussed these concerns with individual board members and other citizens and have offered ideas to school administrators during personal conversations and emails, so my concerns may be familiar to some of the audience. Most governmental and NGO funding comes with strings attached, such as requirements for certain behaviors, expanded bureaucracy, or specified language on websites and documents, services that are not the proper role of schools, removing decision-making autonomy for the local school and parents, and implementations of all policies that do not necessarily align with community values. Examples of funding sources with strings include NGO-funded community schools and major cities programs, not that I'm saying they're bad, but they do come with strings, and USDA funded meals and now procurement requirements under federal grants. Moving on to the amended policy seventy-four-hundred-P-three on tonight's agenda, I'm especially concerned about section on contracting with small and minority businesses and women's business enterprises. This section states that when soliciting goods and services on projects that will use federal funds, the district shall comply with requirements to use small business, minority-owned businesses, and women's business enterprises whenever possible. To me, policy seventy-four-hundred-P-three is an affirmative action policy that favors one group over another. It may violate the United States Constitution's Fourteenth Amendment of equal protection. It emphasizes identity and accommodation over quality of service. It can exclude qualified businesses that might offer better pricing or services and limits the school's choices. Essentially, this policy requires the school to turn itself into a pretzel to accommodate businesses that might not otherwise qualify as good suppliers and potentially exclude others that would. I urge you to either reject this policy completely or to reject federal funding, or both, which would be my preference. The short term available to address the board this evening does not allow for deep dives into all these issues, however, I repeat past offers to meet with interested school board members and administrators and to share details from references that are on the flip side of this paper. And I mean, thank you all for listening.
That was a really well-written letter.
Yeah.
Does have any comments about that?
I just appreciate the input.
Yeah.
It doesn't go unraveled, that's for sure.
We just don't discuss it.
We can't discuss it.
Technically.
We can. We can wait till we get to that policy and then discuss it.
And then. I don't know if we can really bring in the, I mean, it kind of violates what we're supposed to be doing as a board, we're supposed to have a meeting as a board, not with the public, like, correspondence. I don't know, it's a gray area. I mean, we've done it before, so.
Okay.
I just want a three-hour meeting.
I don't either, but I want you to feel heard, and I want you to be able to share things with us, and I think you really put this together well. And so, when we get to that part of the conversation of, on the policy, I think it's appropriate to, you know, comment. If we have a question, we'll ask you.
Okay.
Because it looks like you looked into it a lot, and I appreciate that. Okay. Item six. Six is the consent agenda. Would you guys like to move any of those items for, to discussion? Okay. All right. Shall I make the motion then?
We do. Do we need to?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, the approval of minutes and the payment of bills and general entries.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item seven is delegation and reports. Ms. Rafferty.
If you mind looking at the light, it's going to get very dark in here. Just warn you, but.
Wait, are you ready?
Sure. Much appreciated. Okay. So I am going to cruise through some of these things that are commonly covered on my reports. For those of you who are new to board meetings, I just want to make you aware of that. If there are ever any questions or anything, feel free to talk to me afterward and we can chat. For the sake of time, like, one of the trustees, I'll repeat, we don't really want a three-hour meeting tonight, so trying to be respectful of everybody's time. Some activities that have been going on since the last board meeting, we've had fall winter sports and festivities take place, including wrestling and basketball games, as well as the Christmas concert, which was on the tenth of this month. We've had some outings. Our seniors, for example, a handful of them went to ISU and toured the campus there, got some really good information. Yesterday, we had some power outages, as well as a good chunk of snow, so we did have to call a snow day and, just FYI, a big contributing factor was when the power company called me early in the morning and said that power wouldn't be on until after one PM in the school. So it's pretty difficult to hold school without power. Fortunately, they did get it on beforehand, but we had to approach that cautiously and cancel school. We've been busy at work with teacher observations, as well as the fall evaluations that those go toward, and we've also been working with the State Department. We are in the midst of a federal program's monitoring. So there was a site visit earlier this week, on the sixteenth, where the gal in charge of that came and went through some necessary items with us and helped us uncover a couple additional things that we needed to provide for the monitoring. In February, they will be onsite and complete that full-scale monitoring. We also have been planning for in-school committees. These are things like the calendar committee and connecting with our partners. One thing I do want to mention that we don't always have on here is the ALMA visit. So ALMA is our student management system, and we had a really good visit with the representatives and told them, you know, what our needs are and how we can look forward to improvements if they implement it on their end. So that was a really great visit. Get the head bit. Okay. Just a couple of things we've accomplished. Of course, there was that lovely Christmas concert. We've also received more funds from Pay Up Forward specifically for wrestling and basketball uniforms, as well as Rex Backer's senior project, which will have school life benefits. His senior project is to put a board in the gym that can show advertisements, it can show announcements, and overall, it'll just be a really great vision to our gym. Twelve state and federal reports came due and have been completed, and we've also been norming with the use of our new time clock system for classified staff members. Overall, the feedback's been really good. Some photos, this is Mrs. Ludlin's Christmas concert. Can see Santa came and visited. And yes, that is the real Santa.
Yes.
Beard's great.
That's pretty good.
This was that senior trip to ISU that I mentioned, happened on November twenty-second. Some glowing faces there. And, of course, a huge thank you to Pay Up Forward for their continued contributions to this district. There are so many student projects and activities that wouldn't be possible without their generous contributions. Something I want to mention coming up, we've got a social media safety course that's going to be presented by our very own deputy Gomez. This is completely free, it's for parents and kids, typically junior high and up, middle school, junior high and up, and that is going to be on the eighth of January. If you would like more information about that, feel free to reach out to either myself or Deputy Gomez, or just call into the school, we can give you more info. Something else I wanted to talk about is, in the past couple of meetings, we've talked about open campus for our seniors and our juniors, and what that would look like is at lunchtime, basically, they could leave campus. And we saw a lot of benefits to it, but we didn't really talk about the drawbacks. So digging into the nitty-gritty, we did find one drawback, and that's the fiscal implications of having an open campus. So currently, right now, we have about fourteen, fifteen juniors and five to seven seniors who get school lunch daily, and the school lunch price is three fifty. There are reimbursements from the USDA for these lunches. A good chunk of our students also get free lunches, and for those free lunches, we're reimbursed four forty-three for lunch. For the paid lunches, we're reimbursed forty-three cents. So their projected loss of revenue for our child nutrition program, which all goes back into the kitchen, would be twelve to fourteen thousand dollars for a school year. So it is a substantial loss in revenue that's projected and just something that I would hope the board would consider when making that determination.
So, are you saying that just because we were to open the campus up, this would happen? Or if they didn't show up for the lunches, this would happen?
So if they were to not get school lunches?
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not a determine whether or not it's an open campus, it's a determine whether or not they take their lunches?
Yeah, and talking to kids, it really seems like if the campus is open, they're not going to be getting school lunches. So in that way?
So.
Have that connection?
I just have a tough time wrapping my mind around fifteen students not eating lunch costing twelve grand at three fifty a pot. How's the, how's the math work there?
So do you do the math?
Because I mean, that's, that's, that doesn't work, does it?
Twenty-two students, ten. Twenty-two students, four days a week. And this is calculating who gets free lunch versus paid lunch. We do have a lot of students who receive free lunch.
Well, even if all of them got free lunches, it's still twelve grand? Yeah, I guess I should need to do the math myself, but it seems off to me, but.
And do you think these kids who are getting free lunches are going to go somewhere and pay for their lunch?
Yeah, so that's the thinking, is that they likely will, or they'll go to one of their houses and eat lunch and.
Okay, I was going to say, what are they getting free lunches for then?
What's that?
I was going to say, why are they getting free lunches if they go somewhere else and pay for lunch, right?
Right. Well, I can tell you throughout my entire high school career, that's what I did. I'd go to Subway and I had a job at the grocery store and I would buy lunch out of pocket versus getting a school-free lunch.
Really?
And my entire high school, I didn't get lunch at school one time, yeah.
I don't know if that's a testimony to our lunches or to.
Not to our lunches.
I wouldn't say so.
Our lunches are wonderful, for the record.
And I have eaten here, and they're very good. Anyway.
So it's not a perfect calculation. But when the figures were run, that's, was found. And we can discuss this more when we, when we dive into that part of the agenda. What we're working on next, as always, we have lots of state and federal reports that are coming up due, specifically eight between now and our next scheduled, regularly scheduled board meeting. We're working on some corrective action plans, continuing. So we have one that remains open, and then we have maintenance on a second one. But the good news is that we have officially closed two corrective action plans. Yes.
Good.
And, yeah, we just, we're going to have ongoing maintenance for that other one that's closed through November twenty twenty-five.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's awesome. It's pretty awesome. As always, supporting students, MTSS expanding the offerings for our multi-year structured support. Continuing to improve our billing reimbursement practices with the SPED department through the state section program ed plan. And then some other items that we've talked about before. One of the items that we really want to focus on is improving our communication with the community about our high school course offerings and the possibilities. We've had a lot of interest in folks coming into the district who have previously been homeschooled, wanting a Garden Valley diploma. And the nice thing is that the state of Idaho, we like local control, and so they leave it up to the district to determine whether that can be a possibility. And in talking to the administrators and a board member and some other folks, we very much want there to be a route for folks to get that Garden Valley diploma, so long as proficiency is shown. So the state gives us the opportunity to use the state testing, like the ISAF, to demonstrate that proficiency, and we can make the determination based on that and the credit that have been earned for other testing, whether the student is proficient in those areas, and then whether they can be formally granted the opportunity to earn a Garden Valley diploma, even having missed those official credits. Like, for example, if a student was homeschooled in ninth grade the entire year, came in tenth grade, was at grade level, they could very easily earn a Garden Valley diploma. So that was important to us, to make sure that there's a route for people, and I've been told through chatter in the community that that hasn't always been the case, and I'm hopeful that going forward, we can be more inclusive than that. Okay. So that concludes my report. There is a tech report, and you want to preface this in that this report, although I'm going to be talking about it a little bit, comes from our IT service provider, Michael Morris. He is our IT person who's out here very regularly, who's out here very late last night, in fact. And he has identified a plethora of areas where we need to have some improvement in the world of tech. And the board did receive an extensive report from Mr. Morris. I just want to talk about a couple of things. First off, we've had some problems identified with our switches. Trustees, how would you prefer we approach this? Would you like me to go through each part? Because this is, it's a pretty meaty report.
I'm just happy to hear you've got the phones back on.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a win.
We've got the phones back on, we've got internet, although there are some dead zones throughout the school where we have our additional, I like to think of them as life props, courtesy of the Nampa School District, where a lot of students can hook up, so.
Yeah, I don't think we need a lot of detail on it. I guess the biggest question to me is, I know that Mike's been here an awful lot, happened to work on things, and I saw his vehicle here all through the Thanksgiving break and numerous nights, I know he's been working really hard to get it going. I'm just kind of curious how that's been financially, like, because I think he had to replace components and things like that.
Yes, yes, he has definitely contributed further than our MOU goes. So there is some additional billing as far as hours, but he is being very generous with this, and so most of the billing, they're covering, and they're going to be the cost of, but when he's brought in his additional team members, that's when we do have to pay a little bit extra. As far as the components, there are a couple of things that we have had to purchase, but for the most part, we've had such generosity from our partners at the Nampa School District that we haven't needed to purchase most of the things. One of the, it's a forty-eight port, it's called a switchboard, that they lent us is worth thousands of dollars, and we're getting to use it right now for free. So we are working to improve our E-rate funding so that we'll have more tech funding as well, and it won't be an issue upgrading these items.
Well, yeah, we're just living in a time where we're relying on it, right? My kids, as I'm dropping them off, are like, oh, the internet's down again, you know, and that's, that's a problem, right? Because they're more and more doing things, online classes, submitting things, it's just, we need good internet. So that's, I don't need all the details, I just want to make sure that it's, that it's working, you know? If it's working, great, and we can afford it, terrific. I know in my own office, I struggled with the internet for a while, and I've got Starlink, and I haven't had it, you know, and so I want to look into those kind of options, you know, at what cost, you know? If, what's the problem? You know, and if the tech people can help us understand what the problem is, if it's the internet provider, or it's the machines, and where does it cost, good machines?
And I can appreciate that you guys inherited most of this stuff. This is probably due to more lack of maintenance over the last few years than anything else, and not replacing components when they start to fail. Putting Band-Aids on things, probably, but.
I think there were a lot of creative solutions that.
Creative solutions, sure.
predecessors did.
And it was our first year with the MOU, so we don't really know, and with this company, and it seems like it's working out well.
Can you explain some of it to me? It seemed pretty complex, like, it wasn't the network speed or something like that, it was our actual server unit, and it was kind of a moving target, where you fix something here, there was another problem over here, it was, and so, I know that he was working hard on it, he brought in through of his team to work on it as well, so I think they're getting the solution figured out. Do you want me to explain a little bit more?
Oh, sure, about you, right?
About all of it. Honestly, what's going on here is your internet speeds are slow just because of your area here. The problem is, is the existing networks there, that these guys came in and it was not up to speed, it wasn't up to what we needed to be, and as soon as you started working on it, everything crashed, and then eventually, more and more broke, more and more broke, until it all went down entirely. So what she said, what was data and us did, we're standing to give you guys four large switches, or probably twenty thousand dollars when the district's switches are more, they gave four of those to you. We facilitated that in Nampa schools, we also gave you guys, this small one and another larger switch as well, so those should get you guys by for a while. My, my director in my district, IT director, is also director of the regional IT network of the state, he's also, for degrees, you know, have to try to help as well with Mike and his team to help with some other stuff. So our goal is to try to get you guys going as cheaply as possible for right now. The whole role with E-rate, and if anybody doesn't know what E-rate is, that's basically all the fees and stuff that's on your cell phones and all that kind of stuff goes into a pot that then school districts, so you can go and get IT bandwidth, get new updates and that. And what I'm seeing, and not necessarily that I'm seeing a very good picture of it right now, a lot of the stuff that E-rate's been able to be paid for in the past hasn't been done effectively, so that's one thing we're going to work with. The problem is, it's usually a year away. So you start doing things in March, you maybe get your acceptance in the summer, and then maybe you could do stuff over the summer. In the Nampa's case, we've gotten millions and millions of dollars through that to upgrade our entire network, mostly through E-rate. And so it's a great program to have, as soon as we can get there, we can do that. Right now, internet's working through either the system or the wireless system that we have, I'm going to talk to Hannah today, because we can upgrade that wireless through the Verizon network, through those cradle points at a decent price. That one you have guaranteed, as long as your Verizon's up in the valley, then you guys will be fine. So, and it's much cheaper than a Starlink-type system, and it's a little faster as well. But it is, as long as Verizon's up in the area, so most people have the LTE in this area and are good. As soon as we put the three, the two that we even had up, we almost covered the two of them, almost half the building, or three-quarters of the building, with just the two that we loaned you guys for internet.
It is tricky though, because we have a lot of brick walls.
Yeah, and that's part of the issue, is when you have brick walls, it's hard for that stuff to go through, and so I think if we can get more, and I found pricing on that, we can at least have a good backup system, so your internet's working at all times, at least in terms of that, you can flip over to that. Hopefully, if we can get your internet, your network going to a better level, then we wouldn't need that at all. I mean, our, our network has issues as well, but we always have some fail safes, and that's really what these guys are going to do. They're going to set you up, so you know what they're doing, they, they're actually a really good company, and you guys are in with good partners over there that's willing to really help you guys out as well.
They're setting everything up correctly.
Yeah.
Why do we, I guess, I guess, I don't understand the, the needs, but what, why, why would we need robust servers or twenty thousand dollar switches if the main use is Wi-Fi? Like, we're not running, like, I run sophisticated software that I take huge files, and I have to move it around my office from chair to chair, but here we don't, at least in my mind. Like, I'm like, why are we moving big files, do we need twenty thousand dollar switches if kids are just needing to access Wi-Fi? I don't get it.
So, so the reality of the situation, not everybody is in your Wi-Fi hotspots, and I don't even think there's one in here, all those Wi-Fi hotspots are all done by wire. So you basically, all those have a wire that, what they do is they, they, every single one of them goes back to the main source.
Okay.
And that's one thing we'll also look at, because I noticed, in our district, we found that every single one of the schools' classrooms should have one, and then you guys don't have enough. So that basically what they are, and if they're not the right type of Wi-Fi, then you're also not getting too many people on there, that slows the speeds down dramatically as well. So what we have to do through the E-rate is get all those back to a spot where everybody can use it, but every single one of those are wired. So, and you still have wired devices here, your phone systems are wired, there's a lot of wires going through this company, this, this location, and we needed, I think he said we needed seven at minimum to maintain it. So there's, there is. So there's, there is wired, and all the devices are wireless, but everything to run those devices needs to be a wired connection. If you don't do it, you, you don't have enough wired signal to get to the ends of the building.
And you can't just make the.
A bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, the issue is, when you have as many devices as you have on these, on these, once you start doing that more and more and more, it, you just limit the amount. There's only so much bandwidth a wireless access can do. So you wired it as much as possible, and then at that point in time, you leave the wireless for the students, the adults, to be able to do things. The wireless is really only, it's mostly, and it's a very regulated traffic for your outside people to be able to do a lot of stuff that way, and then you leave the wire to do your other stuff that's the most crucial in your district. You'll never get away from a real robust wireless system, wired system. One thing I asked him was, is there any way to outsource this? So we're actually just running off somebody else's servers, and we're just doing stuff here. And with the internet, it's, it's not as good in the valley strong, because you guys don't necessarily have good fiber optics here yet. It's just not practical to do a lot of that stuff, you, you have to do a lot of stuff in house. And the hard part is, you have to have just as much a robust server as we do. We're bigger, but the reality is, everybody's trying to hit you guys as much as anybody else with bad actors, bad everything, and it's just, it's really hard for small districts to do.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Randy, we really appreciate the support.
Hannah's been the one who's doing most of it. I, I just come in and end it, just looking fancy, because I have to put my, you know, see someone having to deal with all the pain.
Well, thank you both.
Well, and I know Hannah spent an awful lot of time making sure money's spent responsibly. I know one item that I didn't see on there that she took care of was doing the utility patch out here. So I was happy to see that, just doing some preventative work on pavement. Really pays off in the long run, so, yeah, I think that was a good one.
And it's so nice to drive over a flat surface now.
Yeah. All right, item eight is new business. First one is to interview the school board trustee for candidate zone four. We have one applicant.
And only one applicant?
Yep. The best. So, yeah, that applicant is Hannah Mitchell. Would you have, would you like to talk to us a little bit about why you would want to be on the board?
Yeah, absolutely, do you want me to stand up or am I good here?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Um, well, I just, I mean, I love this school district, I've really enjoyed working here for the last five years. And my time ended in October, just so that way I can be home with my daughter Phoebe. And then when there's an opening in my district for school board, I thought that that was a great opportunity to be able to still, you know, I can't devote full-time work for the school district anymore, just because I am home with her, but this is a good way for me to do some part-time influence in any way that I can and be of service. I also am interested in being able to learn the other side of things, because I've had the teacher perspective, and would really like to see things from the school board and like, kind of, the why behind decisions that are made, and get more of that experience and knowledge as well.
I think you're a great candidate for this position, because that experience that you bring from the other side will be very valuable here, too.
I'm excited for that.
I'm thrilled, yeah, I didn't even know that you were, I was like, who are we going to get? I didn't know, I, I'm thrilled, because you're such a great teacher to our kids. My wife was able to go on a trip with you and the other students one time, got to know you better. And I just, we just have so much trust in you. And, and also to have your background, and then to come in and help us with kind of what happens on the other side, would just be so valuable.
Yeah.
Your parent, all these things, I just.
I know, that's another piece of, now I have a daughter, and so there's that investment as well that.
You care.
Yeah, but in that time, so that way I can see positive change for her as well as she grows older and comes to this school.
Yeah, great.
This is at least as much fun as teaching.
Oh, yeah, sure. Talking to a, talking to a room of adults is a lot harder than talking to kids.
All right, okay. You guys want to make a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept, to appoint.
Yeah.
Candidate Hannah Mitchell for zone four of the school board.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to appoint Hannah Mitchell as school board trustee for zone four of Garden Valley School. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. And so at the next meeting, we'll be able to swear you in and do a gathering. All right, item three is, or eight, three, is to accept the resignation of parent professional Donovan Davis. And I got a letter from Miss Stafford saying that Donovan intended to, to resign from that position. So is there any questions about that, or?
Just, you said it's so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what I was still hearing. Only from the professional position, not the wrestling coach, correct?
Yes, exactly. I never used the word resign, what I was using was medical leave, because my father's sick. But everybody else used resign, so I'm going with it, but I need to be there for my father. And the wrestling room, I can tell students not to come in my room if they're sick. Here at school, I wasn't able to do that, they were showing up the next day. So that and trying to clock in, I was having difficulty with that because of Wi-Fi. And it was like I was a liar when I said I couldn't clock in, I couldn't do that anymore. Because I'm, you know, I'm an honest person, I'm not going to make stuff up. If I'm not getting in, I'm not getting in. So that's, I just wanted you to let you guys know, I didn't, I feel like I'm letting everybody down, because those kids need me and they love me in there, they really do. But on the other hand, it was, it was hindering my wrestling, and it was hindering my father's health, because I was bringing home every bug that the school had. And I just got back with another antibiotic. It was strep, now it's not strep, now it's a bladder infection, I'm just chasing antibiotics now. So I just, I just want you guys to know, I didn't go on, you guys, I'm still here coaching, I'm still here for the kids. If I get an opportunity to get back in the room when he gets well, I would like that. So just keep that in mind, I would like to get back in the room once my dad's well.
Yeah.
I appreciate your candor on that.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, for hearing me.
Well, and I've, I've seen you around with kids and stuff, and I think you did a great job, so I appreciate it. Yeah, thanks for what you, what you have done, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and you ask, look at them, man, look at these kids now, I'm like, holy cow, just look at them.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation of parent professional Donovan Davis.
No, second. We got a motion and a second to accept the resignation of parent professional Donovan Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is the first reading and approval of amended policies, 2470P, self-directed, self-directed learner procedure. So can you tell us a little bit about this policy, like, what the intent will be?
Sure, so the self-directed learner designation is for students who are able to learn independently, oftentimes at home or in part at home, while still needing the benchmarks that need to be met. So there are some, some requirements of having self-directed learner status, and that is one of them, that students still have to take the state mandated testing. So in high school, that's the ISATs, and they have to score proficient or higher on there. And but other than that, it's a really great opportunity to expand our reach and offer things to students who wouldn't necessarily have offerings from the district otherwise. For example, our homeschool community, there's, there's really great opportunities to support them in a more robust way. So, for example, iStation, that's a program that's broadly used, and it's quite an expensive program to buy from a homeschooling standpoint. We offer as a district for self-directed learners, we can offer them to use iStation. We can offer extended learning opportunities. If there's a specific thing that they need to work on, we can have our content knowledge experts, our teachers, help them with that, versus them being in the building as a traditional student, but.
And just so folks know, this isn't something new, we're doing this already.
Correct, correct.
We're just correcting some technical verbiage in there. Right.
That's correct, yeah. So previously, the, I think the board adopted the policy that was the same as Perta's policy. And this is just to clear up the wording there, and we get Garden Valleys. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, well, I knew you'd be able to explain it a lot better than I could. I guess, just reading through it, it seems like when we had our last meeting, we talked about low enrollment numbers and how that affects our funding. And to me, this seems like one of the key pieces to maybe increase some of that enrollment, some of the classes, being able to let them, for parents that want to teach their kids at home, that be able to do it through our curriculum here and work with the teachers.
Right, and they can pick and choose, you know, if they want some curriculum and don't want other curriculum. So long as they're reading those benchmarks I spoke about, with that state mandated testing, they can choose what suits them and how they learn with our support, and however far that goes.
Okay. I mean, other things that I kind of consider equivalent to this, or other pieces of that puzzle to, to increase enrollment, might be work-study options in the future, or what we're doing with CTE, or the dual credit offerings, we're offering more of those all the time. That's just a different phase, a different stage of self-directed learning, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think all those things together, that we can build a program to increase enrollment that way.
I think it's fine, when I looked at it, it's like, oh, we're just scratching Perta out, put Garden Valley. The only one that's kind of stood out to me is like, why, why is this one thing of like, multiplication for facts number zero times zero? And 10 times 10, it didn't even make sense to me, and I'm like, what? So they know zero and they know 100? Why do we even have that in there? Let me just take that, I don't get. Because, because the one below says subtraction and division facts. So why do we get specific with multiplication facts? And I, I, that was the only thing. If we're gonna, what's that?
It's tied to IDO code, it's showing that they have a bare minimum standard. Yeah, it goes into a little bit, this specific, but it's just.
That's just.
It's just meant to be, you're not going to have someone who's failing all their classes and then deciding to do this and going, we're not setting you up for success, because you're struggling, you know, like, you need to have like a standard to graduate right as well, right?
And that's just IDO code said, okay, you should know multiplication through tens.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we've been using this, this semester already, and I feel like we have, I'm thinking as a mom as well, good, good experience with the ability for particularly seniors to take those online classes off-campus and really see if they can launch with that, right? And then the ability, they check in once a week, the ability to go, hey, this is, you're struggling, let's come back in, let's, let's, let's round the horses here, right? And see how we can support you and move you forward. But just my student having that freedom to be able to go, if I'm, if I'm cutting in, you know, I can be at home doing this, right? I can be on my couch, hammering this stuff out instead of in the library, right? Or I can take a morning shift at my job that I wouldn't be able to, you know, earn a little bit of money but still be able to maintain those grades. I think it really, it really opens doors for those.
It gives them a little jump on life as well, right? To be more self-reliant and responsible.
Definitely more college-like, right? Like, hey, here's the stuff, you get it done, it's your responsibility. But with that network of, hey, let's pull back in, we're seeing you, maybe you're, you're struggling a little bit, let's regroup and how do we support you, right? But in this case, and in this specifically, was just Stephanie, and she wanted to pass these out for second semester, and she saw that it still said Perta, and she's like, can we tighten that up before I pass it out? Because that's going to be really confusing for the kids and parents to be reading, right? So that's, that's what these are, it's just, Stefa got missed when it first got passed, and it still said Perta, right?
So this meeting would just be to, to first reading of it, and then, or can we just make a motion to?
We can approve it.
Approve this, okay.
You can do either it can be first reading, or it can be first reading and approval.
I'm good with it, and you guys?
I think so, it's pretty simple, just changing the name. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amended policy 2470P, self-directed learner as written.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended policy 2470P, self-directed learner as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is the winter and spring sports coaches. Want to speak to that, Mr. Williams?
Sure, I was going to report board with the individuals for the winter and spring sports seasons, the head coaches, because as head coaches, they design their assistants and hire those, approval upon the assistants taking the proper classes and giving them through the district and the HSA if they're supposed to, so. For high school girls' basketball, Stella Thor, high school boys' basketball, Heather Kelly. Middle school girls' basketball was Lorie Jones, and middle school boys' basketball would be Cory Kelly. Middle school, high school wrestling was Donovan Davis, I was here earlier. Middle school wrestling, which happened, was Pete Tiverty. High school track will be myself and Jim Bygeik as co-head coaches, splitting up those events and that responsibility. Middle school track will be Walker Thomas. High school girls' softball, Jerry Nolan, and high school boys' baseball would be Frank Trevi. Those would be the head coaches of the sports for the fall, falling out the rest of the year.
Okay. And those are in written format, we got them in our packets, too.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
So in our recent policy, we talked about how we were going to approve the coaches, like, within a month after, after the season, right? So instead of getting like a group of coaches like this, it'll be more spread out throughout the year as they occur, right?
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, I submitted to Mr. Williams that the revisals that I've done on there redlined it, and he's going to review those, him and I'll get together, and we'll fine-tune it a little bit, and I'll present it to the rest of the board and to whoever in the staff needs to see it. I'm sure Super Ten, Spafford, Warren, Oger, Stephanie. And then we'll start doing reading on that to see what we want to approve as we go forward on that policy.
You're talking in the, oh, in the policy or the coaches handbook?
It's a coach's handbook, there's really not a policy on that, it's all in the coach's handbook. So.
Okay.
But we'll, well, we should have this done by the time we have to do this again.
Like, we're going to, we're going to help define a coach's handbook, or is there already one that we?
We have a coach's handbook already, we're just going to define how coaches get selected and the timelines that they get selected.
Okay.
That kind of thing.
Is it kind of like the school policy versus the handbook and how we have to get them to align?
Kind of, yeah, there's really not a school policy on how we select coaches, it's all in the coach's handbook.
Okay.
So we're relying on the coach's handbook as to how we direct our energies to picking coaches, so. When, when Mr. Williams and I get through the first part of this, I'll blast it to everybody. I'll let everybody dissect it.
Since we're on topic, I just want to bring something up. I have a real stickler for sleep for kids for learning, okay? Big stickler on it, okay? And I want to somehow work this into the policy discussion or handbook discussion about trying to avoid getting kids up at 5:00 in the morning to do practices. It's not good if we want to learn to get kids up, it'd be like us getting up at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, you know, and, and then just telling us, just go to bed at 6:00. You know, we can't, you know, there's certain circadian rhythms of kids, and we can't biologically mess with them. And so whatever we can do to get less practices in the morning, if that means, whatever we need to do as a school to make sure that we utilize our facilities, the NPR room, whatever, to, for basketball practices, for wrestling, not wrestling, but for, usually basketball, so that we don't make fifth graders, sixth grader, sixth graders get up at 5:00 in the morning. My daughters couldn't play this year, because I'm like, I want you to learn. And so just want that to be on the, on the topic when we get to the handbook. Would you guys like to make a motion based on the, the list that you proposed?
I have a motion that we approve the hiring of the winter sports coaches, winter and spring sports coaches. Mr. Williams?
I'll second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to hire the winter and spring sports coaches as recommended by.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to hire the winter and spring sports coaches as recommended by athletic director Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And then, next item is to open and advertise any remaining open coaching positions. Something to tell us on that? Or are there?
It was placed on the case, it was needed.
Oh, okay.
But it's like it was needed.
We got them all taken care of. So every position has been filled at this point for the majority of the school.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
And just so you get good feedback, I've, I've been getting good feedback about what we're doing in the organization. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Next is the first read of amended policy 5400, the calculation of leave.
If we can go back to substitutes, which is number seven, it was actually approved at, I apologize, it was approved at the November meeting. So we instantly got it on here and represented it, but you guys had already approved it. So that's why, when you went to that one, I knew what you were doing, but just wanted to explain to everyone else why, the why, yeah. It was already approved, it's not biased.
So on policy 5400, the only change I see is changing it from nine to ten sick days?
Yeah, is that to put us in compliance with Idaho code or something? That was the way that I read it.
Yeah.
Idaho code thirty-three, whatever, girl sixteen?
I didn't totally understand it when I read it. If I was the employee reading this, I wouldn't totally understand. How many sick days do I get? Like, when I hire my team, I say, you get six days of paid time off. You don't have to be sick, but there's somebody you get, and then you get more as you stay on with the company. You know, but this one, I kind of read it like, wait, if they don't use their sick days, do they get to collect the whole amount later? Or during retirement, they track it? It didn't read that clean to me, but I didn't.
Yeah, it is kind of obscure how they, yeah, I agree.
If I was an employee, I wouldn't understand.
I guess you get ten sick days on top of all of your other vacation days and everything else. And then if you're not sick, you don't use them, you get a portion of that returned back to you into your retirement, right? That's the way I kind of read it, a portion of it. So it kind of makes you want to be sick for ten days in the year. And, and you know, there is some, there was some verbiage in here that struck me, too. It said, I highlighted on my lap, my other sheet, but it said, we may require proof when deemed appropriate. That puts a lot of burden on the administrative staff when it says may, right? We ran into this before with the word may. So.
And I think it's a clear civil violation as well. You know, to say like, bring in your doctor's note to show me how sick you are, like, I don't think legally we can do that.
Yeah, I don't know, it's.
From the health laws, but.
But if you're being paid specifically for a sick day, then there should be.
In my business, I didn't want to incentivize people to fake being sick or say being sick. I wanted honesty. So I just said, you get this many days of paid time off.
Right.
Use it if you want to, don't if you want to. I don't care, there's a benefit.
We don't get that option because it's state mandated.
Let me, let me read the notes that they provided with it. It says, this change aligns with policy, aligns the policy with Idaho code thirty-three point one-two-one-six. The staff handbook will also need to be updated in the future to be aligned with policy. Payroll will be adjusted to accrue as required in Idaho code thirty-three point one-two-one-six.
We can wish whatever we want on this, but it's Idaho code, so.
Yeah, it is Idaho code, but if it's not, if it's not clearly written, maybe.
Yeah, I think we can improve our policy. I don't mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we don't have to add this today, you know. Then I'm okay. Let's, let's, let's make it clear so everybody hired on knows, this is what I can do and this is what I should do. And then they understand it. And then make sure it's legal for us, for code.
Oh. Go ahead, Ryan.
Just for informational, because I think there's a huge incentive if you're ready to not use sick days. For me, it's been that way my whole career. I've tried to avoid it because you do get value from them when you retire. As far as either a payout, as half of those sick days are their value, or as they will buy your insurance for you after you retire. So like, I've tried to desperately never use them, so I would have the most at the end of my career when I retire.
So it's fifty percent is the number then?
In that, in that.
So, so the problem is here is your, your current policy is against the law. So regardless of situation, you guys have to go up to ten. It's one sick day a month, right? And now, you guys' policy goes into, in, in, I think it's fair enough, all law in the districts that say we may. And the only reason we say may is not everybody goes to the doctor, so how are you gonna go to the doctor and get a doctor's note? Right? What we generally do in NAMM, and I hate to go back to NAMM, always does this. Usually when you're more than a few days and then more than a few days and it's a lot, sometimes we'll ask then. But what happens in a lot of schools is somebody says, hey, I want to go on vacation, but I don't have any personal days anymore, so I take sick. Those are the issues you kind of have here. Now, what happens in the state for this is there's actually a sick leave bank that's administered by person, okay? What happens, when you retire, it's only when you retire with this, with, in the school district, you can take that value of how many days you have, however days you have in the system, and then they basically look at your last, your last pay and how much that is, they, they equal that out. So if I'm making so much per day times eight hundred days, let's say, if you're here for that long, then they basically look at that value divided by two, and then at that point in time, you have that option to be able to use for insurance. You don't get a payout, they won't pay you any cash, this is not that kind of a payout. This is only to be able to use towards insurance. Now, if you just happen to be over sixty-five at that time, you don't need to buy insurance or any of that kind of stuff, then at that point in time, what most people will do is they'll buy their supplement with it. Like, my mom is retired from the school system forever, she's already above that to take this stage. So she's been buying her Medicare Part D's and all that other stuff with her retirement forever. And my dad does the same thing, he's been retired for a high school teacher forever. So that's how it works. Typically, that fund, we actually pay in about one and a, I think it's usually about one and a half percent of our payroll to actually put that in with Percy. Whilst, they kind of did some stuff in the accounting world, figured out it was way overfunded. So the last four years, we haven't had to pay in, and hopefully they think it's still overfunded. But because there's, the nuances that we paid in for so long and so many people didn't retire, so the money just stayed there, right? And they take half of our money anyway. So the reality is, just like you said, it is to the benefit of the employee, the teachers, whoever, to not use their sick days anymore than you have to. The issue we're finding is a lot of people in the upper ages, they continue to use their sick days because they're not long-term thinkers. So it really hurts them in the long run when they've actually tried to go retire in the future and they haven't used that. And it's also a way to do almost like a short-term disability type thing. So if you have it for a long time and you get hurt or you get sick, now you also have that, so you don't have to go and buy a separate policy because you have full sick leave, you could almost get up to a year on some of these people that have been here forever.
Yeah, I was gonna say, also, just a quick note is like, not every school district, and actually only a couple of them offer maternity leave in the state. State employees are allowed maternity leave, but not teachers, just by whatever Idaho law is. But a lot of, like, people my age, and like, I used all, I saved all of my sick leave over the time I was here so I could have time off with Phoebe, like, when I had my first kid. So I ended up saving up just enough time to be able to take that three months leave by the time I had her worked out.
Well, that's good information on you guys, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Well, maybe we do do the first reading to get this in compliance, it's just if we're out of compliance by the law. And then if we want to go back and clarify the policy so we don't have to have teachers explain it to us, we could do that later.
I think that's a good plan. I do want to comment on the amount of sick days provided and personal days. This is what you're specifically looking at is for certified employees, and they do sign a one-year contract. So it's per that contract term. If they don't meet that contract term, that's taken into consideration. And as far as classified employees go, I do also want to comment on the leave, as Mr. Davis was speaking about earlier. Classified employees are, they qualify for leave after twelve months of service, and there's a certain amount of hours that are required as well. So they must work for the district for over a year in order to qualify for leave.
Okay.
And that's not to say like this, this sick leave, but like a paid family leave.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, maybe like Eric was saying, to get us in compliance here, we should probably just get this fixed so that we're within state law.
Do you want to make a note to come back to this one later?
I mean, it is kind of fuzzy policy. Yeah. Well, we do have the administrative staff that handle this stuff, too, right? We don't have to put every single detail. We have qualified people who handle this stuff as well, so.
And this can be in procedure and not necessarily in policy, so it can be in the handbook and clearly outlined. The, the policy is just the overlying.
It's the base layer, right?
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. Whereas the procedure is how do we do that, right? So it may be appropriate to put that in procedure.
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to move that we approve the amended policy fifty, whoops, fifty-four hundred calculation of leave.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended policy fifty-four hundred calculation of leave with the proposed changes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Moving on to old business, the first item is Loma School. Do we have to do the P three one? So, this one? Oh, no, we skipped the substitutes one because we've already. That looks different.
This is the one that I commented on before the meeting.
Sorry.
That was all annotated?
Yeah, yeah, okay, sorry. There's an extra, extra on here. So this is the first reading of amended policy seventy-four hundred P three requirements and restrictions for procurement under a federal award.
I didn't do a lot of reading on this thing, and I did, like Eric and we all discussed earlier, if we take federal money, we have to comply with federal law, right? I don't love it.
Nobody does.
Especially the way it's worded there, it does seem like you're favoring some groups over other groups, right? Unfortunately, that is federal law right now. And the odds of us being able to not have to take federal money to run a school, I think are pretty slim, so.
Yeah, I mean, I assume I, I put construction contracts together all the time for the federal government. It's just part of their standard contract language to include those kind of statements where you're, yeah.
They're not forcing us to.
Trying to give them to small businesses.
They're not forcing us to give them contracts to them, they're, they're just saying we have to make an effort to include them, right? Which, to me, I would like to include every business that wants to bring a contract to this, which I think we would. Apparently, in some part of the country, they would, the reason they had to write this, I guess, is that if they were excluding female businesses and minority business, I'm guessing, but I don't think it changes how we do our business here to, to amend this, I mean, it places us in compliance with federal government.
It's no different than the Bi-American Act or any of those.
Right.
So this yellow is highlighted section. Is this just something that's being brought to our attention from Elizabeth? Or is this an amendment change?
That is what has been added.
So this is new this year?
Required, and we, if we don't pass this.
And then Elizabeth said, wait a minute, and then gave us the information of why. Can I ask Elizabeth a question? If it's non, if it's, if it's non-constitutional, like if it, if it, it's against the Fourteenth Amendment, right? Is that a case that you bring forward? I mean, I'm, I'm not.
I'm not doing any of that. I'm only my opinions based on.
I think our opinions.
And what I've seen.
I, I just want you to know, I think our opinions align. You know, as a board, I think that we don't like the idea of accepting money from the government and then being beholden to them. We don't like adopting this kind of stuff. At the same time, we look at the budget, we're like, how else do we do it? You know, we, we have one school district here, and we don't have a private alternative. The alternative that's, that we're in a losing situation with is homeschooling. You know, as we lose more and more kids to that, we get less and less funding, and our programs get weaker and weaker. Our programs that we want to offer our kids are harder and harder to do. And so, you know, as we, as we work together as a board, if some strange thing did come up, you know, we need to get a contract to add on to a room, I think that we would do a good job of saying, have we been fair to all parties? And, 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 and I think that if that means that there's a great women's company, construction company, we'll look at it. And that we still have the ability to decide.
But just to address her concerns, we take in a lot of money from federal grants or NGOs or, but they have their strings attached, and I think that is the board and the administrators' responsibility. Spend the money only in ways that represent what we want to do and how we want to do it.
Yeah.
The community included. If we're spending money in a way that you disagree with, I don't have any problem addressing that.
Yeah.
But we still have to follow the law.
And there is flexibility, and it says to the maximum extent practicable.
Right. And I love that you do the research.
There's not auctions here.
Pick it up and, and check it out and give us a heads up. So if, you know, if we get to where we're misspending the money, we're doing a program that you feel is like, oh, you just really shouldn't do it, I might express that to us, and I appreciate that. We will listen, we will hear you. And anybody else. Okay, so do we need a motion to, okay. I'll make a motion to accept the modifications or the changes to policy seventy-four hundred P three?
You want to say?
I was thinking real quick.
Can we just read the whole thing?
If, if this is what you intend, can you say, I motion to approve the amended policy?
Makes it easier for a click.
Okay.
That's. I just, yeah, with clarification.
Okay.
Just, it's very similar to what approval of amended policy. Right there.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the approval of the amended policy seventy-four hundred P three requirements and restrictions for procurement under a federal award.
I have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to, for the approval of amended policy seventy-four hundred P three requirements and restrictions for procurement under a federal award with proposed changes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, now we can move on to old business, the Loma School. Did you have updates on Loma School?
No formal updates.
Okay.
So we're, we're still in the same situation where we would like the Loma School to remain open for the rest of the school year, and by that, I mean, having students there, having a teacher at the Loma School, which necessitates having enrollment.
You know how that second meeting went up there? I wasn't able to go to that. Did they, is it going to turn out as the first one that we went to?
It was actually three meetings. There was a couple, well, none of them were like, it was just kind of community get-togethers, I would say, with parents and things like that, seeing what we could offer them that would encourage them to enroll. And the last one was at the Sourdough Lodge up there, and it was kind of a different dynamic. It was more community members, and there was only one parent there, but she had, let's see, there might have been a couple, there was a couple of parents there, yeah, Clay, Clay went to. Well, it, it was just kind of outlining what we could provide, and we, Bundy went up with us, and she sent out a survey to them with a list of, I don't know, there was like eight or ten questions, what their needs were as far as curriculum, how we could.
what their needs were as far as curriculum, how we could enhance what they were already doing, transportation, the hours that the school would be open, things like that. Just to give their feedback on what would be the best situation for them.
And I think Superintendent Spafford has been very consistent on this. We have never had an intention, nor do we feel in the future that we want to shut down the Loma School. We're trying everything we can to keep that school open, so just wanted to reiterate that.
And if we are not able to have enrollment for the second semester, to have it open next year?
Yeah.
There is no desire to close the Loma School. From, from us, I should say. Maybe there is from others.
Very much a positive thing for the community. And the community comes up there and says, we want to keep this open. Yeah, so do we, just swing some of these homeschoolers to go there, you know, get some kids there, we got it. And that's really, and so we're doing all these other policies, self-directed learning, whatever we can to make that possible. So, and just as a reminder, there was a community member up there that asked to do a program at the school. The kids want to do a program at the school, I think it's next month, so I don't know if they've reached out to you yet, but.
We had discussion.
Okay, good, okay. Next item is discuss transportation options for that upcoming school year. What are you going to speak about or who did I have?
Mr. Dewey.
Mr. Dewey.
I'm speaking again, sorry. So ultimately we're looking at is to see what the benefit, you guys had tasked us before to look into it when we had our budget meeting to see, would it be better for us to bring it in-house than it would be to stay with our existing contractor? We are at the end of our contract, end of this year. The risk if we stay with our existing contractors, we need to go out for bid anyway, I believe we're at that, that point. And whether or not you're going to have anybody else willing to bid in this area, I think that's the same risk you've had before. When we talk to the state, the state feels very, very good that if we were to bring it in-house, that we'd be able to handle that. There, there's some risk with that and making, you know, making sure we can keep drivers and that, and then we also have to buy buses. There are options of leasing buses and that kind of stuff and how many we can get. And so the plan is, and I talked to the state and I sent her an email again today, is to, let's really look at the numbers and see if that's a good option. Right now, when we looked at it compared to some of our neighbors, our, our existing expenses is very high for what we're getting. And so I don't think there's, it would be a problem to be able to do it. It's just really a matter of how do we get it financially to accept it. And again, the state was all willing to help us and, and get us there, help us with interim. I actually know the company that they go through to buy the buses as well. They think, she has a read, that this company has a read on like one-year-old buses that they think they'd be able to get for us. And so it, it is a good option. And I'll, I'll probably bring to you guys probably the next meeting, some of the numbers that we're actually looking at, we'll, we'll present it to you and say, this is kind of what we think we should do. And at that point in time, you guys can make a decision whether or not to, we, we go out for a bid again or we decide to bring it in-house.
Thanks a bunch for looking into that. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely.
I do have to say, Mr. Chairman, I'm very reluctant to put another burden on the administrative staff of this school in this regard. I mean, it would be, I think financially it would be a boon to us, maybe, maybe not a boon, maybe a benefit. But the administrative burden and maintenance and all the other things that go with that, it, it's a lot to ask at this point. I mean, if the, if the numbers are that dramatic, I don't see how we wouldn't want to do it.
So currently the manager that's running the facility now, my understanding is he's kind of their all guy anyway. So he kind of does all the maintenance, he does all the administrating and that kind of stuff. So we're really not talking, I don't know how much the main corporation for them actually does things outside of this office anyway.
Yeah.
So it's really if we can pursue another avenue other than that and really just try to reduce costs, we're going to go for that.
Yeah. Yeah, finding that person would be great and like you say, finding the drivers.
Yeah, yeah, the hard part with any bus route, it takes almost two months to get anybody trained up to be able to do it. And I think that's part of the reason we reduced our routes in the first place because there's just not enough people in the area to willing to do it. And you can only pay so much before you get, you know, out of our price range as well. But I, I think in the end, I, it, it is very expensive here. But my other concern is this is from the nature of what I've seen at the state, trying to get through the state system and what they're trying to redo, some of the formula and that. The original projections I had actually showed us losing an additional sixty thousand dollars on the exact same contract. So if that contract price went up next year, we're still looking at losing an additional sixty grand, which is another teacher force. So we got to do something, we got to figure out something in order to reduce that. And, and then again, the state is very much believe that if we run it in-house, we can probably do it. Not saying we can, I can show you the numbers yet because I have never run my own bus line on that. But I think there is possibility that we can do it in case you guys have some good numbers and you guys make a good decision.
Okay. Great, thank you. And Superintendent Spafford, we had any preliminary discussions with our current contractor on this?
We have not passed our current contractor wanting to renegotiate the terms of the contract this year and increase the price.
Okay, would you mind if I took a dive into that with the, our current contractor just to?
Please, yeah, I'd love to do that one too.
Okay.
Anything we can do to save money?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it seems like there's more to it than just the financial part, like maybe break it down by what the different options cost, whether we bought our own buses, the buses, lease them or contract them again. Look at the different options financially, but also like if we did lease or buy our own, we might not have the opportunity to contract it out again, like it might be.
You get a bus company to come back. West data used to own their own buses and they did theirs. When they switched over, you just have a contractor, the next person that basically can buy your buses from you. Or eventually they, they basically use your buses until they're about to finish the patch. That's not a huge deal. The buses are about seventy-five grand a piece. So I don't know if we would actually have the cash to be able to buy four buses because that's basically what we would need.
We could do it with three, I think, is what I.
We have three right now, but what the problem is, if you only have three, you have three routes. If one breaks, then you have no route. So you have to at least have another bus and you, activity busing, if that one's out, you need to be able to try to get another driver for activity busing, which is, our districts have troubles with right now getting activity busing going. And so we prefer that should be five. And then you have that activity busing and another one sitting there. And the fifth one probably isn't a brand new one that's just sitting there, it's a little older one that you can buy much cheaper. But it, it's a doable thing. And like when I started looking at the cost of that, I think we're paying almost as much, three hundred grand here. And, and that, I mean, it doesn't take much when you start having the math to be able to hopefully. You know, the only issue we have is we don't really have a facility for them. I don't know what this facility is. It's those types of things. I have a big point of contract because I used to like to be able to try and find the drivers and hiring and all that kind of stuff. But if it's, if they're out pricing you, there's not much you can do now. And hopefully they'll figure that out and want to do something for the district who wants to stay with the contract. That, that'd be the preferred, so we don't have to do any of it.
Yeah.
But reality of the situation, I just don't know if they're willing or can based on the structure of their, their management.
Yeah.
Seems like leasing is a good way to test the waters.
Yeah, we would probably lease anyway.
Yeah.
And there is an option available to lease to own as well.
Okay. Next item is policy thirty fifty-five, month by closed campus. We've looked at this several times and it seems like there's kind of another, another item that came up today that I wasn't expecting, the financial part of how that might affect the school. So what are your guys' thoughts on that?
That twelve to fourteen thousand was the maximum. That was every student, junior, senior that eats lunch now, they do not eat lunch.
For all four days.
And that'd be like for all four days for thirty-six weeks. Then you get to twelve thousand, that's how I calculated, I'm like, all right. I was like, how is that possible? But I don't think there really are thirty-six weeks of all four days. I mean, there's holidays mixed in there, so.
That's a worst case scenario.
That's absolute worst case scenario, that's running to twenty. And like we're running to fifteen, it's way less. I just don't, I mean, I was in an open campus and relatively small school. I didn't do it every day, you know, but I did it some days. We have one option in this town, two, you know, subway or the gas station, or they can go over to the market, you know? And they're going to do it sometimes. I don't know if they're going to do it every day.
If it's expensive.
And if it exceeds their, their budget, I don't know. I just, I, I just not that concerned about. But I don't want to, I don't want to feel like we have to keep them in this process because we profit off of them, you know? Because we get some more free lunches, I don't know, I just don't, I don't love the idea of that. I love the idea of rewarding these kids that are good students, which isn't all of them, but hopefully all of them, with some kind of self-directed learning or some kind, some kind of incentive of, be the, do well in your class, you have the, you have some liberty to go. Because the next year they're going to be adults, they're going to be out on their own going to college. I think it's appropriate to let juniors and seniors have some autonomy to make decisions.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask our kitchen manager a question here?
Sure.
So Debbie, this affects you obviously, right, what we're talking about. Do you have to prepare meals for every student that attends the school? Like how do you, how do you structure your day?
Every morning we receive a lunch count, so we prepare, prepare according to that.
A lunch count comes from the attendance of the day. Is that the idea? Is it the, the attendance of the day?
Based, based, based on who's there and then who's there gets polled, are you getting hot lunch or did you bring lunch? You get a hot lunch number, it's presented.
Most of the years were based on average participation on each day. And so the average per student that we would be between four and forty-three per student, based on, you know, a four-day week. The, um, the revenue would go down, of course, expenses would go down somewhat. But in order to maintain the service that we do, we would not, you know, it would be hard to lose staff, which is a possibility when you consider that amount. We have all part-time people in the kitchen right now. So we don't pay any benefits to any of our kitchen staff. So we keep our costs as minimal as possible right now, but food expenses are, you know, going up, so.
Yeah. So you have input costs that would be theoretically taken out if some of these students didn't show up. Or are those input costs going to be put in there regardless?
They what?
So like if these students show up to school in the morning, that you're anticipating to come to lunch and then they decide they're not going to come to lunch, there's no mechanism to correct that before you have to prepare lunches, right?
What do you do on a sports day?
We do adjust our preparation according to the number of students that are expected to eat that day.
Okay. But do these students give us this information? Do they say, I'm expecting, I'm going to go to lunch today? They do. So, so they could theoretically say, oh, I'm going to be off campus today. And that's something you guys manage on a day-to-day basis here.
Like when there's, like when they left the basketball game today, when they went to council, or yesterday when a whole bunch of seniors and juniors went, you get a heads up on that, say, hey, you got to do fifteen less or whatever?
So I'm not sure I understood the question.
So today there was a basketball game and the kids left before lunchtime. Yesterday, same thing, my daughter left, that's why I know that one. Do you get a head count?
Yes.
On those ones?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then do you just, are you, and then at what number of, you know, if fifteen students said, I'm not taking lunch today, at what number do you think it, it would require one less personnel, you have to let somebody go? Are you worried about that?
There is a formality to calculate the number, or the number of hours, labor hours that are needed to serve certain number of students. So we would recalculate, we would adjust. But it, obviously if there's a loss in the kitchen, you know, loss of dollars, we do have a, what do you call it? We have a fund balance with some money to defray losses. But eventually if we were to get into the negative, then the district has to step in and we match those funds. So that is a consideration. We're not close to that right now, but we're down the line.
Okay. Thank you, that answers my question. And Superintendent Spafford, so in your opinion right now, when you look at our students overall, how many would you say would even qualify for this?
Would qualify for off-campus.
As it's written for off-campus.
So that was the, the figures?
Yeah, like, you know, with all the criteria that we've applied in this policy, if you actually just.
I have twenty-two juniors and seniors.
Yeah.
How many would qualify today?
Fifty percent of them, twenty percent of them. I mean, the grades got to be up, they got to have all the stuff, right?
Close to fifteen percent.
Okay. That would actually qualify, not necessarily they would take that option, right?
Right.
So then we're talking about ten students?
Possibly. Okay.
Is there any other downsides that superintendent or principal sees to this besides the lunch attendance?
For the most part, just, you know, the supervision concerns, we have such a short lunch break and that's intentional due to us having a four-day school week. So if you're thinking they're, they're going off campus, it's for less than a half hour. It's not a whole lot of time, so, so from a supervision standpoint, it's like, didn't have much time to be off campus. My concern is very low for this. I can see both sides, I can see the benefits, the drawbacks.
And I got to say, from when this was originally proposed to me, or to this board, my thought on this was that there's, so when I, I, we had an hour lunch at my school and we were able to ride our bikes home, make some soup, move and get back to school, just in time, right? I don't foresee a student, or many students, being able to take advantage of this unless they have a gap period somewhere before or after this. That's, in my mind, that's the only way I, I thought that this would work for a student. And if they're on some of the programs like we have now where they show up, they have their classes and then they get to go home after fifth or sixth period, right? Then this isn't even, this is a moot point, right? So the only way I see this with those students, if they have an extra period to take advantage of this. They're obviously not going to go and work at a job, right? So it, I think it's going to be very, very small selected group of students who are going to take advantage of this. And I hope that if this passes that we, they can take advantage of it. So that's where I kind of thought this was heading when I first heard the proposal.
Yeah, what I got from the students was that it wasn't so much making a mad dash to the subway to try to get a sandwich at lunch. It was more maybe bringing a cold lunch with them and going for a walk down the walk path and driving to the park and then having a little time to meet with their friends, you know? That's how I envisioned it being, more so than trying to go get something to eat.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I also like the spirit of what she did, Emma did, to put this before us and say, hey, I've timed this all out. I've, I've given the whole policy a good look, written it up and set criteria. I just, I kind of want to reward it. I think it's terrific. And, and if it doesn't work, we can amend it, you know, we can fix it.
Yeah.
You know, and if bankrupts our, you know, our school lunches, which I just don't see it dealing with ten students, then we can, we can adjust.
Good.
I think we do have students, if I may, please don't forget the comment.
Sure.
Um, I do think like even today, we had four or five students that just forgot stuff for their sport, right? So if they hadn't been leaving for that sport, then leaving twenty minutes early meant they couldn't come back. So if they had lunch, none of them were over this twenty-three minute, current, I think twenty-three minutes maybe about what our current lunch is. They lived close enough that if they needed to run home, they weren't stopped or discouraged from coming back because of our closed campus, you know, process currently, right? Do I let them come back? Yes, I want you back, but it's, and I've, and I've had this discussion with several of the kids that live really pretty close, it's just simply that, you know, you're not supposed to come back and here are the reasons why. Because you could be going and making poor choices, bringing those back on campus. And, you know, for example, those four or five guys that needed to run home real quick and grab their jerseys, they forgot. you know, for example, those four or five guys that needed to run home real quick and grab their jerseys they forgot, right? It would accommodate, you know, those students if they fell under that qual, the things that qualify them for it. I like, I like giving them those options. Do I want them to crash on a snowy day? No. Right? But that's where that, that's where this principal portion comes in, where it's, you know, criterion, degrees, method by which grades are checked, but also to the ability for the principal to be like, not today, today's not a good day, right? Like, we're, we're talking about possibly closing for the day early, you know, like maybe not going home and coming back, or X, Y, Z. Definitely have a place.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, light of the past discussions we've had on this over the months, and where we are in this, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this policy three zero five five, modified closed campus. And then if we want to have more discussion on that motion, then we can probably have some more discussion.
I'll second that. Okay, got a motion and a second to approve policy three zero five five, modified closed campus as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hope you weren't opposed, Anna.
Oh, no.
Because I thought, I just, I think about it till right after, I was like, no, maybe I could lay for another month.
That's exciting.
Next order of business is executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six one B.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go to executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero six, section one, subsection B, to consider the evaluation dismissal or just plenty of, for personnel.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to enter executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six one B for personnel. Can I get a roll call vote?
George Simpson? Aye.
Clay Cooper, aye.
Eric, what do you want?
I'm dominating.